This conference meeting of the Mobile County Commission is now called to order. We will get started. Do we have any speakers? Okay.
No one signed up to speak today.
All right. I guess it's your turn, Eddie, to lead us off.
Consider the following. Number one, approve minutes of the regular meeting of August 8th, 2022, and August 22nd, 2022. Two, approve a list of claims. Three, accept subgrant award from the Alabama Law Enforcement Agency under the fiscal year 2021 Homeland Security Grant Program for Operation Stone Garden in the amount of $100,000 for the project period September 1st, 2022, through August 31st, 2024, for the Mobile County Sheriff's Office with no local match. Number four, approve appropriation contract with the Board of School Commissioners of Mobile County in the amount of $7,200 from District One funds for its reading initiative program. Five, approve appropriation contract with the Board of Schools Commissioners of Mobile County in the amount of $7,427.05 from District One funds to be used for its coral department.
Eddie, I would like to split that with Commissioner Ludgins. You're welcome.
Number five. Excuse me, that's the wrong one. Number six, approve sponsorship agreement with Our Sister's Closet in the total amount of $1,000 to be divided as follows for its purse with a purpose fundraiser. Seven, approve professional services agreement with O'Neil Publishing in the amount of $6,000 from District One funds to provide digital platform management and consultation services. Eight, approve sponsorship agreement with Sims Women's Club in the amount of $500 from District Two funds to be used for its Sims Christmas Tour and Shop Hop event. Nine, approve appropriation contract with the Board of School Commissioners of Mobile County in the amount of $7,863.62 from District One funds to be used at its coral department. Ten, consider taking the following action on bids.
I have a question. The fifth item down, number 61 and 62. Where's that property located? How much property is it? Jay, do you know?
I can find it out for you.
All right, thank you.
I don't remember the acreage. I'd say it's off Half Mile Road or down that way.
And on 90-22, I think that should be all over Janitorial. I think we just inadvertently dropped an arm.
Eleven, approve renewal of Lanell Software Annual Support for the Government Plaza Card Key Access System for a two-year term from October 1st, 2022, through September 30th, 2024, for the electronics department. The cost of the renewal is $12,512. Twelve, approve change order number one with tendile construction for Mobile County Parking Garage Stair Repair. If implemented, the change will decrease the contract by $10,000. The new contract total will be $133,478. Thirteen, approve recommendation of the Mobile County Board of Health to exempt the listed organizations for a one-year exemption from paying food and lodging fees for the 2022-23 permit season effective October 1st, 2022, through September 30th, 2023, as follows. Fourteen, adopt resolution authorizing the request of probate court to dispose of certain items from the fixed assets inventory list, declare a surplus property, and authorize items to be disposed of by lawful means. Fifteen, approve agreement with SMG and the City of Mobile on behalf of probate court for rental of the Mobile Civic Center East Exhibit Area to hold pole worker trainings for the 2022 election cycle for the following dates. Sixteen, approve amending the agreement with Goodwin Mills and Kaywood for roof maintenance or replacement of various county facilities. This amendment will increase the contract by $128,500 to provide for a comprehensive leak investigation of the south tower at Government Plaza, which will increase the total amount to $376,000.
Hey, is that... $375,000 just to investigate where a leak's at? Or does that include any construction?
No, sir. The majority of the contracts for design bidding and administration of the roof project, the $128,500 is the addition to the cost for the leak investigation. And a little bit more than half of that is due to the swing stages and infrastructure that'll have to be installed to do the inspection.
Is this relating to the leak problem on the, in the, on the 10th floor?
Yes, ma'am. That's what this is for.
Okay.
This is primarily to investigate the leaks we have on the city side. We've been unable to find those.
How extensive is that? And I know there's one office involved because they sent me pictures of it, but is there any place else that's leaking?
In, um, in the corner office, I believe occupied by Jimmy Barber, there's a, uh, there's a stain on the ceiling tile. So there's an intermittent leak in that office. And I believe that occasionally there's a leak in the mayor's office itself. They seem to all be intermittent, and the majority of them are, I guess I'd consider more nuisance leaks. They, uh, they're a drip. Sometimes they don't drip at all. Sometimes they drip more.
But this should help us pinpoint exactly what's happening?
Yes, ma'am. And after some thermal investigation of the roof, I think we'll probably receive some details and insight that we can apply to the rest of the roof at the Government Plaza to prevent any future leaks.
Is this relatively new? Because when we, when we did the repair work previously, I, I don't recall hearing anything about this. Has this been going on a while?
No, ma'am. This is relatively new.
Okay.
Based on the thermal investigation, it seems like it may be a leak that's developed over some time, but it's only become apparent in the city's offices relatively recently.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Seventeen, approve assignment to WAS Design for Government Plaza Pocket Park for design bidding and project administration associated with the development of a park between Government Plaza and Government Plaza Annex. The proposed fee is $101,110. Eighteen, approve assignment to the Architects Group for West Mobile County Park Playground Splash Pad for bidding and project administration associated with the construction of a new playground splash pad. The proposed fee is $91,148. Nineteen, approve assignment to PH&amp;J Architects for equipment upgrades to Mobile Metro Jail Sewer System for design bidding and project administration associated with the development of a debris extraction system. The proposed fee is $94,250. Twenty, approve amendment, assignment, and consent to assignment of professional services agreement by Dr. James R. Steffurak to Steffurak Psychological Consulting Services for James T. Strickland Youth Center. Twenty-one, approve psychological assessment consulting agreement with Steffurak Psychological Consulting Services to train, oversee, and support evaluation activities of master's level staff for James T. Strickland Youth Center for a term of one year at a cost of $125 per hour.
From, paid from detention subsidy? Or where's this paid from?
General Fund Office.
Hmm?
General Fund Office.
Jeff, is that where it's always come from, John Fund?
This, Mr. -- this is a new, we had a doctorate-level psychologist on staff who's hired up for years.
Uh-huh.
We have an agent for place, a psychologist. We've hired two master's level therapists in their, in his place, and we need a psychologist to supervise the master's level therapist. This is a whole new game. This is the short, quickest, cheapest route we can get to have a, a doctorate-level person sign up.
So at this point, you really can't project how many hours he's gonna need until you get started?
And the contract totals $18,700.
Okay, thank you.
Is it eligible for detention subsidy funding?
That's, if you can.
Is, uh, is there funding available through detention subsidy to approach it that way?
Right now.
Okay. Because it seems that if there is, that would be the route to go.
Mr. -- I have a memo on my desk about detention subsidy funds. I can call, look over it, and get it through this afternoon.
Okay, okay, that'll be fine. So we can know before Monday.
It's steadily declining.
Yeah. I don't even, I don't know what's left. I guess they can tell us.
Yeah.
What was the total cost? Jeff?
Eighteen.
$18,700.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Okay.
Twenty-two, approve partial release from release and servitude recorded in the office of Judge of Probate at Real Property Book 6507, page 1704 of certain lot shown on the plat of Burke Forest Subdivision, recorded in mat book 121, page 78, lessen except all drainage easements in common areas shown on said plat, and authorize the President of the Commission to execute the partial release on behalf of the county. Twenty-three, approve order form, general terms and conditions with Fifth Asset Doing Business as Debt book for use of its debt and lease management software as a service application for an initial term of one year at an annual cost of $8,750. Twenty-four, authorize right-of-entry with the Student Conservation Association, the Nature Conservancy, to allow Gulf Corps team members to assist in maintaining Mobile County conservation lands during the fiscal year 2023 at no cost to Mobile County. Twenty-five, approve service, service agreement with Greer Enterprises for disposal of regulated medical waste for James T. Strickland Youth Center for a term of one year at a cost of $85 per Sharp's container. Twenty-six, approve professional services agreement with Peter Rosten for the provision of computer networking and IT services at James T. Strickland Youth Center for a term of one year for an annual cost of $84,000 to be paid from detention subsidy funds.
So this is, this is like a, like a 20% increase? That seems pretty significant. Is there a particular reason, Jeff, the, I mean, I, I know everything costs more, but 20% seems like a lot. Is there some...
I just got the question from Pete Bass, the judge, and I passed it down. I didn't get to detail on the, or, if I may, I'll make you that a rate.
So I would, I would just like to know, I mean, we've had this contract a really long time. I'd just like to know the intervals and when the last time we've done, because 20% just seems like...
A big jump.
A big jump. Unless it's been 20 years, then of course, I could see that, but I just...
I can check on that question.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, just the history on, uh, payment over the years. Thank you.
Twenty-seven, approve contract amendment number six to the Mobile County Park Initiative Contract with Moffett and Nickel dated June 23rd, 2021, to add Task Six additional services for Cedar Point Fishing Pier. Twenty-eight, authorize amending the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, grant application for the first responder safe room to increase the total budget to $4,101,601 with a 10% match, and authorize the Commission President to execute all associated documents. Number twenty-nine, we're gonna ask that the commissioners vote at the conference. Approve submittal of grant application to participate in the BISL Pet Foundation Empty the Shelters event that will support funding and promotion of a pet adoption event, October 2022, at the Mobile County Animal Shelter.
So moved.
Thirty, approve contract with Thompson Consulting to provide disaster debris monitoring services.
Is, I have a question about this item. Is that a contract that we're going off of with, um, ACCA? Or is this a non-bid contract for mon, uh, debris monitoring? How does that work?
Good morning, everyone. So the county participates in the ACCA contract for debris removal. And in the past, we've participated in that same contract or separate contract for different firm for monitoring. But in this latest go-around, ACCA awarded that monitoring contract to one firm to represent and to monitor all debris activities throughout the entire state. So we were concerned that that firm will be able to provide the monitoring that we need after a storm. So we went through a procurement process to meet all FEMA requirements. And so this contract is consistent with 2 CFR 200, and, and we'll have a firm that monitors, under contract with the county, to monitor the ACCA debris, debris contractor.
Did, I meant...
Yes.
Did you say that they're gonna, that Thompson is going to monitor the ACCA's contractor?
Our con, uh, the contractor that we, uh, we're under, we participate in the ACCA debris contract removal.
Who is, do you know?
Gulf Equipment.
Is gonna be doing the debris monitoring?
They'll be the remover.
They'll be the remover.
The contractor that removes the debris would be Gulf, Gulf Equipment or Gulf Halling.
Crowder Golf.
For Crowder Golf.
It's Crowder Golf. They've got the debris removal.
That's right.
My question is about the debris monitoring.
So Thompson Consulting.
Who got the ACCA's monitoring contract?
It was an out-of-state firm, and I don't remember their name.
And Thompson, we're gonna use them for the debris monitoring on this contract. I guess my question, is that a no-bid contract?
Because we procured the contract.
Okay, we did, okay.
And they were low bidder?
Well, Thompson Consulting is a, it's a, it's a professional service.
Okay.
So we went through the, the professional service procurement, which is not based on a lowest, least-cost bidder. Now, the remover, the contractor that removes debris is based on a, a rate.
How is, uh, how is their rate determined, Thompson, on this consulting contract?
Um, we have hourly rates by position, and, and so they charge us based on the manager of the site or the inspector. And, and we will monitor that from the beginning. They, they won't go to work until we give them a notice to proceed after disaster, after a declar, after a declaration. And so we will be monitoring every activity from the beginning. We give them the notice to proceed. We make sure that they're following through with all the tasks that, only, only those that we assign them to.
Just one of the...
And then we seek reimbursement from FEMA for those costs.
Who did the debris monitoring for Zeta and Sally?
Thompson Consulting Services.
All right, thank you.
So Zeta and Sally, and this monitoring contract was, I don't want, I think a disaster is probably overstating it, but we had lots of contractual issues.
Yes.
Uh, can we get assurance from legal that we have anticipated the kind of problems that we had before and provided language in here where we won't be back in that situation again?
Good question.
I thought, I, and my complaint really isn't with the debris monitoring. It was more so with the debris removal for me and my district. The monitoring wasn't so much an issue, but I think, if I'm not mistaken, and I'm not trying to call, I'm not gonna call out the name of the company, but I, I think it's a different company who's got the contract with the state, with ACCA.
Correct.
Then Zeta and Sally.
The, there was a different debris removal contractor, uh, under contract through the ACCA contract for Sally and Zeta. So they've gone through a, a new procurement process and selected two different firms now.
I think what you're referring to is during the time that we, we had agreed on a consulting fee, and, uh, and then it came back that, well, this, this, it was more extensive work than we anticipated, and it's gonna cost, it was over $100,000 more.
And it just kept...
Yeah.
We did address that in the contract.
Okay. Okay, that's right.
Previous, previous contract, so there's a requirement in 2 CFR 200 that there be a cap...
Okay.
On the contract. The previous contract with the monitoring firm had a cap, the cap that was pegged to a percent of the removal contractor's total cost. So we don't have that type of cap in there anymore. We've capped it on a fixed dollar amount.
Okay.
If we approach that, if it's a massive storm and it requires us to go over that dollar camp, dollar cap, we'll negotiate with the consultant and request to increase that cap when the time comes.
Okay.
So that's, that's, that's the way that we've addressed that problem, so that we won't have the issues that we had previously going forward.
Great, thank you.
And that's consistent with 2 CFR 200.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thirty-one, approve memorandum of agreement with the Alabama Department of Transportation for removal and disposal of debris along state-maintained roadways. Thirty-two, approve change order number two for Escataba Hollow Park and Campground Improvements, Phase 1A. The change will increase the contract by $27,415.80 and increase contract by 121 working days due to impacts from weather events and supply chain delays.
A question on 31, if we can back up for just a minute. That agreement, I think this is something recent that the state is, is now allowing, or, but is this for, for them, for their pickup? Because I think that they have agreed to do some debris pickup, have they not?
Yes, ma'am. So there's an existing MOA in place with ALDOT. This will replace the existing MOA. Uh, they're materially exactly the same. There's just some changes in the language. FEMA's updated some of the terms, things that they call things. This MOA reflects the, that updated language. Uh, it does not require us to remove any debris from state right-of-ways, but it gives us, um, the ability to do so. And if we choose to do so, to also get FEMA reimbursement.
But this is kind of after the fact, because the state will actually remove it for a period of time, but they'll set a deadline. Is that correct? I mean, how is this gonna work?
I'm, I'm not sure if I understand your question. So if you're referring to the first push...
First pass.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
So first pass is, is no longer a term anymore. So there's a first push. So say there's a lot of debris on the road. The state will come through and push that debris off the road onto the right-of-way.
Oh, okay.
Then the debris contractor will come back and pick that debris up. If we so choose, we could have our debris contractor pick up the debris on the state right-of-way, and this MOA allows us to get reimbursement for that work.
Okay, I just didn't know how that came together. Is it, and this is a good thing, right?
It, it is a very good thing. It is. We, we can, we can use it if we want to and not use it if we, if we don't want to.
Right.
So there's no obligation on our part.
We just don't want it to be sitting there too long after, you know, when the first push, we want the state to pick it up.
Exactly. And if they don't, then we can, and we can receive reimbursement from FEMA for that.
As long as we can do that. That's good. All right. Thank you.
As you know, constituents don't always know if they're on a state route or a county route. They just want their debris picked up.
Exactly.
And this would give us the ability to respond without giving them bad news.
I know it's been problematic in the past. Yes, thank you.
Thirty-three, approve contract with the City of Creola in the amount of $87,735 from District One funds to be used to purchase tasers and virtual body cam starter. Thirty-four, we'll ask that this be voted at the conference. Award bid 46-22, custom tag envelopes for the License Commission to OEC Office Equipment Company of Mobile for their bid in the amount of $29,455.20.
So moved.
Second.
Thirty-five, approve renewal of NEMO-Q Annual Equipment Warranty and Software License, COVID-19, under the current purchasing cooperative in the amount of $17,585 for the period September 30th, 2022, through September 29th, 2023, for the Revenue Commission. Thirty-six, approve renewal of Leeds Online Power Plus Investigation System Service Package in the amount of $12,822 for the period of October 1st, 2022, through September 30th, 2023, for the Sheriff's Office. Thirty-seven, approve amendment to the Mobile County Commission American Rescue Plan Act Strategic Spending Plan approved August 1st, 2022, to add, revise the following projects for funding. Thirty-eight, add-on number one, approve amendment to fiscal year 2022, general fund budget as follows. This budget amendment is to remove the amounts budgeted in the general fund for district initiatives utilizing ARPA revenue loss funding. The expenditures will be tracked in the ARPA Revenue Loss Fund. This adjustment reduces the amount of general fund revenue and expenditures by $7,500,000, resulting in an adjusted general fund budget totaling $163,617.20.
Say that again, Eddie?
So that will total $163,617,020.
Very good.
Thank you for that opportunity to redeem myself. I appreciate that.
Those numbers just move around.
They're all over the place. Uh, add-on number two, um, approve project in the amount of $1 million from District Two funds for the design and construction of the Mobile County Soccer Complex. And we have an add-on number three, approve an EFP appropriation contract with Friends of the Pritchard Public Library in the amount of $14,000 from District One funds to replace damaged flooring and other items related to library operations subject to submission of required documents. And that is all.
Okay. I don't think I had that last one.
No, I just emailed it to you at 9:30. You don't have it.
Okay. All righty.
Sorry.
That's all right. Okay, is that it from administration? All right, I guess it's engineering time, public works.
Very good. Good morning, commissioners. We ask that you consider taking the following action on agenda items on Monday. One, authorize the acquisition of property and the acceptance of right-of-way deeds and easements as listed below. Item two, adopt a resolution consenting to the annexation of a portion of the following public streets, Snow Road North, Summit Drive East, Ward's Lane, and Willie D Circle North, and these are bounded by territories annexed by the City of Sims. Item three, approve reimbursable agreement for the relocation of utility facilities on private or public right-of-way with Alabama Power for one of our 2018 pay-as-you-go projects. Item four, approve right-of-way or easement agreement for Track 7 on one of our 2018 pay-as-you-go projects. Item five, approve right-of-way or easement agreement for Track 2 on one of our 2020 pay-as-you-go projects. Item six, approve right-of-way or easement agreement for Track 6 on one, another one of our 2020 pay-as-you-go projects. Item seven, approve right-of-way or easement agreement for Tracks 23 and 24 on that same 2020 pay-as-you-go project. Item eight, approve preliminary plat only of Angle Brook, which is a 108-lot subdivision there in District 3. Uh, there are some conditions associated with this preliminary approval. Uh, item nine, approve preliminary and final plat of re-subdivision of Salco 43 Industrial Park, has two lots, that's in Commission District 1, and preliminary and final plat of the re-sub of lots 3 and 4, Abba Temple Subdivision, has two lots in Commission District 3, and preliminary and final plat of Shin Road Estates, that's 14 lots, which is in Commission District 2. That's fourteen lots, which is in Commission District Two. And preliminary and final plat of Pritchett Corner. That's two lots in Commission District Three. And preliminary and final plat of Ward Acres Subdivision. That's two lots in Commission District One. And preliminary and final plat of Penny Lakes West, which is five lots in Commission District Two. Item ten, approve supplemental agreement number one with John D. Walton Company on our Glass Road project, uh, for some alternative, uh, pipe, uh, supply chain issue, Commissioners. Uh, no increase cost to the contract. Item eleven, approve agreement with University of South Alabama on behalf of its Coastal Weather Research Center to provide weather forecasting and warning services for a one-year period in the amount of four thousand two hundred dollars. Item twelve, approve setting the following speed limits as listed below on Johnson Road South. Uh, item thirteen, approve the functional reclassification of the following road, Glass Road. Um, that segment is, that new segment from Hurricane Boulevard Northward up to, uh, Highway one eighty-eight. And that will be a minor local.
Was this, uh, Brian, was this road one that we had to close during the last week in April when we had so much trouble?
Uh, it, this is a brand-new road, Commissioner, that we have not even opened up yet.
Okay.
It's a new outlet for the, uh... What is that? The school? High School, Bryant High School? At Bryant, yeah, Bryant High School.
Oh, okay.
It was a, Hurricane Boulevard ran west off of one eighty-eight and just dead-ended down there. So we're providing a second outlet there for the school.
That's, maybe that's why it's familiar. Okay, all right.
It's been under construction. We're getting very close to doing a final inspection and getting ready to open it up for, for use. Uh, item fourteen, approve a final plat of Penny Lakes and accept the road right-of-way. Um, and Commissioners, we did have one add-on that I delivered to your office a little earlier this morning. Approve assigning Mont McDonald the contract to perform professional engineering services, which will be the design and the C E and I for one of our ARPA project roadway improvements to Calioke Road and College Parkway from Shelton Beach Road Northward up to the Pritchard City Limits. And that is currently it.
Y'all been busy. Okay. Anything else? No? Commissioners? All right. Then we will stand adjourned until Monday.